It is 6:55, and I'd like to call our regularly scheduled meeting of the Common Council, the City of Hudson, to order for Monday, March 7th, 2016. If you could please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll.
Mayor Virchell.
Here.
District One, Morsette.
Here.
District Two, Elms.
Here.
District Three, McCormick.
Here.
District Four, Weber.
Here.
District Five, Hoggatt.
Here.
And District Six, Hall.
Here.
First order of business is public hearing on the special assessment proposed for Vine Street improvements project. Now is the time for anyone that would like to speak to that to come to the podium, state your name and address, and speak to the issue if you so desire. Come on up.
So I just have a question about it.
Could you tell us your name and address, please?
Teal Persiger, and 411 Elm Street.
Okay.
So I got the letter in the mail, and it's, I'm butted up next to the alleyway that goes to the Municipal Water Building back there. I don't have any access to that alley, so I'm just questioning how that impacts my property.
Okay.
So what we'll do during the public hearing is we'll make these notes and stuff, and then we'll have staff address it.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Ryan Logan. I live at 511 Vine Street. Merriam-Webster's definition of the word improvement, the act of improving something, the act or process of making something better, the quality of being better than before, an addition or change that makes something better or more valuable. I'm struggling with the word improvement six months from now when this is done, and I have faster traffic in front of my house, likely more traffic in front of my house, and if I listed my house for sale that day, I'd be hard-fetched to get a dollar more for it because I have new curbs, new gutters, a new water main, and somebody actually said I might have better water pressure. So I'm trying to figure out why anyone thinks we're going to be better off six months from now, the value of my house, and on top of that, we have to pay something. So those are my concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to this issue? One more time, and then we'll, I'll move to close the, I'll ask for a motion to close the, is there anyone else that would like to speak to this issue? Is there anyone? Are you here to speak to the issue of the Vine Street improvements? Then you're up, if you want to. If you want to, because we're almost done. If you have any questions?
I didn't just start like five minutes ago?
Yes, it did.
Wow, that's a good beginning.
So if you have anything you want to say, now is your chance.
We're just here to kind of hear what you all are talking about.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add, Summer?
Okay. If not, someone to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? At this point in our agenda, we'll ask for comments and suggestions from citizens present about any item on the agenda that is not, or any item that is not on the agenda. If there's anyone here that would like to speak to the council, now is your time or opportunity to speak to the council. I'll request again, if there's anyone here that would like to speak to the council on any items that are not on the agenda tonight, now is your time to speak to the council. Hearing none. We'll move on to discussion, possible consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
To approve the regular session meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2016, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $10,870,482 and 24 cents. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. The operator license has been postponed. To approve the application for a second-hand mall flea market dealer license for Brian Bessler, doing business as Abigail Page Antiques, located at 503 Second Street for the period March 8th, 2016, to June 30th, 2017, contingent on payment of any outstanding debt owed to the city. To approve the temporary Class B license for the 2016 gala at St. Patrick's Congregation on April 2nd, 2016. To approve the final plot of the Cedar Valley subdivision located in the town of Hudson as proposed by Mr. Bass. To approve the EMS commission minutes.
Move for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We need a roll call vote on that. Roll call, please.
Morsette?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Elms?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, final development plans for Hudson Boat Works Commercial Development east of, highway 35 and south of Cooley Road, HAF Red LLC. Mr. Darnold.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Plan Commission recommends approval of the final development plans for the Hudson Boat Works Development. That's a 7,440 square foot building. Intent, the location is south of Dairy Queen and north of the Northwest Mutual Building. Continued, the continuation of recommendation is, what's the condition to access will be limited to ride out only for exiting traffic, and that if the speed limit is reduced to 25 miles an hour, the Plan Commission will review the access issue, including restricting the access to ride out only by signing which the restriction limited to a specified time period. So I want to clarify the issue of the 25 mile an hour speed limit. When this issue came up on the potential restriction of access to ride out only and traffic backing up and causing concern, I invited Wisconsin Department of Transportation staff to come over. One of the issues I discussed with them was the possibility of reducing speed limit to 25 to try to even out the speed because in some areas, in the right lane coming north, you may have cars going anywhere from 5 to 25 miles an hour. In that next lane coming north, if there's no car stacking, the cars might be moving 45 miles an hour. It's that disparity of speeds that causes some concerns, particularly for the exiting traffic coming out of the facility. So now, we haven't requested the lowering of the speed limit, DLT. I want to wait till after tonight, see what the final decision of the Common Council is. It would be my recommendation, the mayor and I write a letter requesting that. However, I think that the speed limit's only one issue for the Wisconsin DLT in that area that's having congestion of traffic south of the Cooley Road intersection with State Trunk Highway 35. There's other issues that the state would want to work with the city to work on, so I mean, even though if you make a request for a speed limit 25, that's not likely the only issue the state's going to want to address there. So I just want to caution you now that it's not a one-issue situation for the city and the state to resolve. What we do want to do is reduce the amount of traffic that backs up at that intersection, so at the access to Northwest Mutual Building and the Hudson Boat Works project, that the traffic will be backing up as far into the evening. Now generally, the traffic's pretty limited, but again, it creates a left-turn situation that's potentially hazardous, so we want to try to get that corrected. Again, Plan Commission recommendation is to approve the final development plans, restricting it to ride out only on exit access. There are members of MLME, which is the property owner, and half redevelopment, which is the developer on the project, if you have any specific questions for them.
Anyone have any questions or comments from Mr. Darnold? Yes, Jim?
How do you plan to control the ride only? Is it going to be built that way?
It'd be a raised median.
Right.
I move for approval based on Danny's recommendations.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is, are we approval of the permit? There was, he had two issues there as well.
Two issues.
Well, it's the only issue right before the Plan, or the Common Council's night to Hudson is the development plans. I think if it's okay with the council, the mayor and I will move ahead with the DLT issue on our own, so.
Okay.
I think that that issue has merit for us to make the contact, so.
Folks want to add anything, or any comments? Okay. Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Darnold. Discussion, possible action on application of Lolo American Kitchen, Hudson DBA Lolo American Kitchen and Craft Beer for Class B fermented malt beverage and Class B liquor license reserved at 175 Second Street, and request an extension for a timely startup of the business. Move for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
As Devin said, this will be, will have one liquor license left after this?
Correct. Full liquor.
Full liquor.
And did the council want to retain the right to review the license premises description once the building is built?
Yes. Is that okay with the, whom had the motion on that?
I did.
Randy did, is that okay with you, Mr. Morsette? And the second, or Jim? Yep. Discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion and possible action on change of owner of Class A liquor license for CAP Operations DBA Northland Liquor, number 79, located at 1920 Crestview Drive. Just a change of license. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And again, with the idea that they surrender their previous owner's alcohol license. Discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine, discussion, possible action on approval of conceptual plan to consider a dog park at Prospect Park along the westerly bluff of the old hospital site. Mr. Zuli.
Good evening. This issue has been talked about several times probably the last few years, but at the February Park Board meeting, representatives of support at Hudson Dog Park provided some estimated costs and some diagrams, and said they actually had a survey sent out and did some questionnaires for the need of the dog park in the City of Hudson. They're proposing to have the park on the westerly part of the old hospital site in Prospect Park. I think if you guys have a map in your, in your packet, kind of shows the different phases. Phase one would be a larger dog park, and on the westerly bluff side with the fence extending down into the wooded area. Phase two would be a smaller area where the old boiler room, boiler area was for the old hospital site.
It's a little over an acre, right, Tom?
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
So the Hudson, the Park Board at that meeting recommended to approve this area for consideration for a dog park, so we're just presenting it to the council and getting thoughts on this area and the concept of the park itself.
We have any restrictions? I know that we were purchased that land with some state fund. Is this considered a passive activity, not a active? I think that was always the issue.
Yeah. Yeah, I finally got ahold of a lady down with the Wisconsin DNR, and she sent, I don't know if I have it, sent back explanation of the requirements for park and a passive recreation, and dog park was in that, a letter, and I spoke with her, and no red flags were raised, so.
Have you talked with the neighbors on the west side of the hill there?
We have not talked, I haven't talked to anybody yet. We're just proposing this at this time, so I don't know if that would be one of the recommendations of the council would be, to have a public hearing or speak?
I would like to see a public hearing for the folks that are in that immediate area. And that's, it's so far into the woods, so you're not taking up any future development of that park?
It's partly up in that area, you know, the old hospital site where it's, on the west side of it, part of it's in the woods, part of it's, you know, just on that flat area. At this point, there's no really plans for development or anything else in that area. Like I said, and Mayor Virchell said that this area has to be more used for passive recreation, so it's not like we could put ball fields or anything like that up there.
Is that a chain link fence all the way around?
That's what they're proposing.
I'm just trying to understand it because we wouldn't let a frisbee park go up there with poles and that stuff, and now we're putting a chain link fence up in the park in that kind of the middle of it?
It's not, that's, it's just up for discussion.
I'm asking the question.
Yes. I guess you got a point there, you know, the other thing is, is I think there was concern about, certain concerns with the frisbee park, and there may be concerns about this.
Were there other locations thought about?
They talked about Webster Park one time, they, they brought up several locations.
At this point, it looks like the funds for the fence will be raised by the folks that want to do this, is that correct?
That's what they're saying, yep, that they're gonna, you know, and I did say that, you know, there might be some city costs if we, if they want some kind of a drinking fountain up there. I haven't talked to Kip yet, but I know there's fire hydrants and things like that, but we'd probably have to get a water service for a drinking fountain or something like that. Probably the cost of a porta potty at least in the interim until, you know, a permanent restroom or things like that, and just general maintenance would be probably some money that we'd have to consider out of our operating budget.
I know a lot of folks have talked about a dog park for a long time, and it's something that it's, I think, needed here.
We did check what the insurance landed, and generally, they're fine with it, and we also got information from Chippewa Falls. They have a pretty good-sized dog park with just some tips and things, and things that they've noticed. Then we've given them to Deb and Tom, so they're aware of them. Things that have worked, things that haven't worked, just be good for us to make sure we're ahead of things now that other people have had them, so. Just further things that we can look at before we actually, and they'll probably have to come back for final approval, correct?
You know, pending if the council would like to have some type of public hearing or just leave some public comment for sure.
Yeah, the other thing that I, just a little bit of concern is it's awful small.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, too.
It's, you know, it's only an acre, or just a little over an acre.
Once upon a time, we were thinking about that corner at the government center there, and I know Danny brought it up in a different meeting, but if we ever, it'd be way more space, probably room for parking, and...
In fact, I think the Y had agreed to parking at one time there.
Just a thought, if you want to look at that, too.
Not saying we couldn't have more than one, but there'll be, an acre is gonna, if you get quite a few ups in there, that's going to be a tough, tough goal.
I do know that, that even if you go up there early mornings, I mean, people bring their dogs up there right now, and they're just running around free.
Yep.
They let them go, and they run into the woods, and it's kind of being used as a dog area right now, so.
What's your thoughts? Anybody else?
Well, first of all, I think we do need a dog park. There's definitely support, if you look through the comments and the survey, it is something that people would utilize, and I think that this is a good location for it.
Okay.
I think there are, experience with two kinds of dog parks, the big ones like you were talking about, by the county building, and there's a couple of those in Woodbury, and they're really a lot of fun, but a lot of people can't take their dogs there because you just lose control. You know, your dogs have to be really well-controlled to go there, so see a lot of the smaller parks, way, way smaller than an acre down in Arizona, for example, and they work. I think people tend to self-monitor, there's too many, if it's too, if it's too busy for them, they don't go, or they pick a different time, and that's something we'd have to look at. The other thing I would be concerned about is the health of the animals who are there, when, you know, they need to be, have rabies shots, you know, whatever it takes for a licenser, and they should probably be licensed as well. We know that's an issue here, so.
Well, maybe it's something that we can look at, what Chippewa Falls has done, and I'm sure there's other ones, too, but...
Yeah, Chippewa Falls would be, I'm sure they've gone through the same thing.
They have a pretty good size, and so that we can maybe set some guidelines so that it's set up ahead of time, so.
Yeah, and we talked about that at the Park Board, that it would, it would have to be licensed animals only, things like that.
Then we'd have to make the volunteers, well, the concern is that, if there aren't volunteers there to do it, are we then looking at having to put city staff there? And I'm not saying we are, but that's another, because that's going to be difficult, if it's going to have to be, if we aren't going to have city staff there, then the volunteers, if there aren't volunteers, it's not going to be able to be open, so. It's going to be a pretty big commitment for, if they want to do it, to command it.
Randy, does this need to go through public safety?
I think it should.
Maybe that's the place where the recommendations should come from.
You okay with that? Yeah.
Okay, I'll get those.
Everybody else okay with that, or do you want to?
Well, I'll have Deb get those down, Melanie, so that you guys can see what they do there and get some guidelines set up, then.
Okay. Right. Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Okay, let's move on. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Discussion, possible action on ordinance 5-16, amendment to number one to the 2015 general fund balance. Mr. Welly.
These are just a few minor budget adjustments we have to make at year-end. We're required by law, if we make, if we move money between the different categories in our budget, we're required to do this notification and have this ordinance passed. So this will take care of all of 2015. There weren't a lot of them. There were some that you have previously approved through council action, but these are the ones that...
We hadn't made the transfer, then?
Right. So these are the ones that need formal council action, and it has to be done by ordinance.
So is there someone willing to suspend the rules?
Yeah, I'll move to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call?
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Elms?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance number?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay.
That one.
Discussion, comments? Do you want to talk about, we've got the public works transfer for the building.
Right, there was some budgetary personnel transfer class. The big one is the purchase of the Ward Avenue Building, which was taken from undesigned fund balance from the prior year, so that's, that's the big one in there.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
And this will be published.
All those in favor? Or we need a roll call, don't we?
No.
No?
Need a motion.
We had one already.
We have motions.
Yeah, I move to approve.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion, possible action on appointment of a finance officer. Mr. Welly.
The Finance Committee interviewed four candidates on February 25th. Unanimously selected Brenda Malinowski. She is the Assistant Finance Director from Cottage Grove. She's been there 18 or 19 years, and the last seven or eight years as the Assistant Finance Director. So the offer of employment follows, if there's any questions on that. Otherwise, we recommend her approval of her appointment.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
She's been here, met some of the staff already, she's excited to get here and get started, so. And so am I.
She'll do a great job, yep.
When does she start?
April 11th. She wanted time to tie up some things there, and I didn't want her coming up the week of the election, so. There's just too much going on, so she'll come on the 11th, then.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, discussion, possible action on Resolution 7-16, final resolution authorizing 2016 Vine Street Improvement Project Special Assessments.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Is there a second? Roll call?
Morsette?
Yes.
McCormick? I mean, Hoggatt?
Yes.
Elms?
Yes.
McCormick?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
And Hall?
Yes.
Nice question. What is the English saying?
Where, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get to you, we'll talk about it in a second. Any discussion on this item?
Move to approve and adopt Resolution 7-16.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussions?
Essentially, this means that the assessment rule as presented is being approved. It obviously will be adjusted for actual quantities when they do the construction, so.
So when you say you're going to suspend the rules, it means you don't have to...
What, no, resolutions and ordinances normally, often technically require two readings at two consecutive meetings. The council has the option of suspending the rules and taking action on an item at that meeting. It's done fairly regularly, so.
So that's before you say anything?
The public hearing was earlier, at 6:55, so there was a public hearing scheduled at that time on the special assessments.
That answer your question? Okay. Is there any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion on possible action on appointment of special municipal prosecutor. Mr. Welly.
This is coming from Judge Garrity. There is a case that, a motion hearing has been scheduled, and there's a conflict with our prosecuting attorney from our attorney firm. So what she is, we found out that there needs to be an appointment made. It's been several years since there's been a conflict, but we're proposing to appoint Attorney Bartholomew as the special prosecutor in cases when our firm can't do the prosecution.
I think he's at North Hudson.
He's at North Hudson, he's done it before several years ago, but we just wanted, they're recommending, the municipal court administrator is recommending that we take formal action on this, and he'll, if he declines, then we would have to then seek out another attorney, but...
So move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
And then I will work, or the clerk will work with him as far as scheduling and payment of fees and that type of thing, so.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Couple things here, I have a appointment to the Fire and Police Commission that I believe needs to be approved by you. There's a vacancy on that commission due to the passing of Dale, Welly. I'd like to appoint Paul Adams at 1424 North Ridge Drive to serve out the term on the Police and Fire Commission with the term expiring April of 2019. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a proclamation here for the American Red Cross Month of, Month of March, 2016. In Hudson, Wisconsin, we have a long history of helping our neighbors in need. American Red Cross Month is a special time to recognize and thank everyone's heroes, those selfless Red Cross volunteers and donors who give their time and resources to help community members. These heroes help families find shelter after a home fire, they give blood to trauma victims and cancer patients, they deliver comfort items to military members in the hospital, they use their life-saving skills to save someone from a heart attack, drowning, or choking. They enable children around the world to be vaccinated from measles and rubella. The American Red Cross depends on local heroes to develop, help, and hope a disaster, and hope during a disaster. We applaud our heroes here in Hudson who give, who give of themselves to assist their neighbors when they need a helping hand. Across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responds to disasters big and small. In fact, every eight minutes, the organization responds to a community disaster, providing shelter, food, emotional support, and other necessities to those affected. It collects 40% of the nation's blood supply, provides 24-hour service support to military members, veterans, and their families, teaches millions of life-saving skills such as lifeguarding and CPR, and through its Restoring Family Links program connects family members separated and CPR, and through its Restoring Family Links program connects family members separated by crisis, conflict, or migration. We dedicate the Month of March to all those who have supported the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross and relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. I therefore, or now therefore, I, Alan Burchill, Mayor of Hudson, do proclaim March 2016 as American Red Cross Month, and the city of Hudson encourage all Hudson-area residents to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission." Next item I have is discussion in, about creating a facilities ad hoc committee. I think we, we talked a little bit about to score an ad hoc committee to discuss related to developing recommendations and the utilization of recently purchased Ward Avenue building, as well as any other municipal facilities. I'd like to appoint John Hogg as Public Works Chair, Bill Elms as Council Rep on the Advisory Fire Board, and Tom McCormick as Council Rep to the St. Croix EMS Commission to serve on the committee.
I'd like to move to table this until after the new mayor's appointed for our April organizational meeting.
Well, I, that's okay, we can do that. I think it just delays the process of trying to get the, I'm not sure the mayor, you're not happy with the appointment, Mr. Morse?
Somewhat, but I think it should be the next seated mayor's decision on moving forward with those facilities.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'm not sure a table needs a second, goes to a meeting.
We'll have a vote on it, then. We don't, if, if we don't need a second, then we'll have a vote on it. Anybody, you wanna check that, or?
Well, I don't know that I have a summary thing, anyway, in here.
Okay.
So, if you wanna, just go ahead and...
Is there a vote to, okay, all in favor of tabling it?
Aye.
Oppose to tabling?
No.
Okay.